For the service, and this is proposing to increase that fee by $1 per capita for the upcoming fiscal year.
And what's the logic for doing the dollar?
About $3,000.
But what's the logic for choosing a dollar rather than five dollars?
Okay, here's the logic. We do not really want to chase business away. We do not want the town thing to go and take on Golden Cross. We know that Pomford is trying to do a deal with Hartford to take over. So it's, uh, that's the reason. Don't want to chase away what we have.
How much did it go last year?
Centim.
The same, right, that's what I remember.
I'm going to entertain a motion.
Some move to increase the per capita ambulance rate for Hartford Towns, $1.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded that we increase the rate for $1 for Bridgewater, Heartland, Plymouth, Pomford, and Reading. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it. The expenditure report for Vtrans Cox District Road.
Correct, so we did, uh, we had a failed steel culvert, and in the state of Vermont, you won't, you cannot replace a steel culvert over three feet with a steel. So this we had to replace with a monster, concrete box culvert structure to allow fish and habitat to go upstream. Fortunately, we got a lot of money from the state to help pay for it. The total cost was $188,600. Local portion was $8,880, and the state grant is $169,920. So it's like, this is actually a flag board to sign that the work has been done, which it has. You've signed that the work's been done, and then I'll submit the requisitions for state payment.
Let me make a motion to approve it.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve the, uh, Vtrans request for payment for the culvert, um, on Cox District Road. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next thing is the rec ended budget. Everybody received the packet from Gail. Very well done. I was impressed. She did a great job. Jill went and visited her with her today. And, um, you have something to report, or?
No, just that I understand what the, how, how the rec center is funded now, and what they really do, and understand how we, as a town, give them about 50% of the funding.
So there's two options that she has put into her, uh, budget proposal that we need to act on?
Correct. Okay, just saying that when, when the state came across with Act 60 that taxed down the Woodstock people quite a penalty for every dollar, so we had, in our town budget, added $60,000 for the rec center to pay the elementary school in gym rental.
Is the work around?
That's correct. More money in the school budget that you didn't have to pay the Act 60 penalty for. And so, since Woodstock School anymore, the proposal is, the flood port has an option of leaving it in or taking it out. And Gail, being her budget, she thinks that the school would like to know sooner rather than later. And so if we're gonna, the flood port was gonna make that, then she'd like to know to tell them.
So rather than waiting for our budget to be approved by us, which happens in quite late, they should know right away, so it goes into their budget for the next year.
They can complain on us.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept her option one, which reduces the gym rental from $69,000 to $5,000.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded that we use option one for budget proposal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. So the next thing on our agenda is the town zoning administrative act for 4411 Churchill Road. Michael, who's, who's gonna?
Well, Peter's gonna present, I assume. You're the applicant.
Yes.
I'm here to back up whatever.
Okay.
Sally's here as well.
Don't fight over it, somebody. So the idea is that it's located just across the road from the inn, and it would only be the, it's actually four lots there, believe it or not, on the Glasman Schoolhouse Lot property. So it would only be the, from the building south to the corner there, would not be the larger parcel that's above that. That would remain residential. So the idea is that it would be a great addition to the inn property. Sort of an adjacent building. And Simi may know more about the intended use of the actual building, so she could speak to that.
So the current intended use, um, that building is an old school building, so there's two large rooms downstairs, so the current intended use would be for yoga, meditation, kind of community, more community oriented spaces that both inn guests can enjoy, but also community members can enjoy. There is an apartment upstairs that would also, as we discussed, previously, would be used as housing potentially for people that would come do programming for the inn, is kind of the idea right now, but for inn guests.
And the abotters all know about it, nobody's complained of?
Yep.
This is where we did the site visit.
Exactly, the second one, yeah, that big building up on the hill, right after the first site visit, of the last zoning.
And it's been empty, right?
For a very long time, yeah, for almost six years, it hasn't had anyone inside of it.
So all the things you can do with it for the close school.
So my, I just have a general question. The inn district has certain requirements for, for inn buildings. This would strictly be an accessory building to the inn, because as you know, in the inn district, you have like a ten room minimum.
Right, right.
This would not be a separate inn.
Exactly, that, we rezoned it, we used the inn annex language that we developed for the, uh, Woodstock Inn request here in the village. They wanted to rezone some property south of the existing inn. We used the inn annex, so a separate standalone inn could not be developed, but the uses, accessory uses, we call them, it's an inn annex, it's allowed, as long as it's tied to an inn. We use the same language for this structure down south of Woodstock, so that that building would never be allowed to be an inn on its own. Doesn't have enough acreage, for one thing, and it doesn't have the ten rooms, and, uh, we also tied it into the, the language here that it'd only be used as an annex, and all the parking would take place on the inside, and whatever parking needs, like 88 probably, you'd have to park over there or something, but, uh, and it is, the lower portion of the property is very small. But we did write language specific to that function.
Anybody else? Questions? Comments? From the board? Yes?
Hi, good evening, my name's David Gray, and, um, I'm here representing Mr. Eric Lang, who lives on Heartland Hill Road, he's got property there. Mr. Lang doesn't have any opposition to what's before you, in fact, it seems rather appropriate, given the context of the area, the existing uses, um, and the language that Michael has described. But the board may be aware that there is a pending action in the environmental division where there's a zoning enforcement matter, and it's possible that future requests for rezoning are going to come before you. And in that regard, um, he is concerned that these kinds of requests not be done on an ad hoc basis, where it's gonna be considered to be spot zoning. So, again, he really just wanted me to, um, be present to make sure that the basis of your decision is really rooted, as has been described by the applicant and reinforced by Michael. And I know that Jay Morgan's here as well, and I had discussed with him some of these issues.
And what do you, what, what property are you referring to?
Um, Mr. Lang owns property on Heartland Hill Road. He owns, um, it's like 138 acres. And, again, he's not, he doesn't live in this area, he's not concerned about this proposal, he just wants to make sure that the context of it is rooted in the fact that there's an existing inn, um, it's been set up as a lower piece of property, and just to make sure that the board, the select board is aware that there are other land use activities in the town, in particular, this one action, and there's a concern that, that zoning changes, um, be rooted in the context, that there's an acknowledgement that there's the broader town plan, which you go through a planning process, and through the, um, planning commission, and then to you. So, again, it's just really to make sure that if you're gonna have minutes, you're gonna have discussion, you're gonna speak about why this is an appropriate change, that there be a public record that it's because it's appropriate for the context of the area, that's all.
And this has been through all of those layers and layers, and meetings with the planning commission and so forth, and there's obviously an inn right across the street.
Right.
Right.
And I remember going to a planning commission meeting where we specifically talked about spot zone, spot zoning and how we didn't do it, right?
Which this is not.
Right, yeah.
I'd just like to say that I'm, I agree with Attorney Gray about this kind of thing. The danger in any zoning changes is that you enter into a sort of a situation where you're doing spot zoning. Once you grant someone a spot zoning request, it's very difficult to grant other, not to grant other people that same thing, and your zoning regulations begin to fall apart and deteriorate, and you lose the value of zoning itself. Just a caution there.
So your concern is, is about spot ju, spot zoning as a, as an idea, not so much about this specific request, this specific annex, this specific, okay.
So will you reiterate exactly why this isn't spot zoning, so everyone understands?
Because it's associated with an inn, and it's being tied to the inn. If it was a separate parcel in the middle of nowhere, and, and you did rezone that commercial, then that would be a, 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 a spot zoning issue, because the neighborhoods don't enjoy the same benefit that that particular property owner enjoys. That's the main basis of spot zoning.
Thank you.
In this case, you do have an inn right there, it's in a commercial, it's in a hamlet, it's in an area that's developed, so, uh, and we did do a, uh, chapter 117 report for section 441, which we have to refer to the town plan and make sure that there's a series of questions and stuff we have to fill through and answer those.
And the inn, inn annex language had been in there prior, far prior to this request, it was not?
Well, it's new to the town zoning, but it, we used it before.
But not because of this request?
Right, but an inn accessory use is already allowed regardless.
So we just clarified what this was.
So it's not what you rewrote the rules to accommodate that?
Anybody else? Any other comments? Thank you for your comments.
I would make a motion to approve the zoning amendment for 4411 Churchill Road, as described on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded that we accept this. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
So it becomes effective 21 days after tonight.
So what, what could happen in that 21 days?
They could ask to have the various uses that they would like, they have to go through a condition to use review with the town development review board, they just can't start operating that, and so they do have to go through another process, but that would allow that process to start.
Okay, so it's not, it's not the time for a comment to be in?
One could appeal it to a higher court, that's that 21 day period.
Michael, just to clarify, we wanted to file for an application for a zoning permit, we could do that during the 21 day period?
Yes, 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 as long as we approve it after.
Exactly. Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is the planning commissioner interview with Ben Gervey.
Last week, when you were interviewed with the trustees, I was sitting out there, and I couldn't really hear you.
I don't know about that.
And you had a very impressive event, so I would suggest you speak up a little bit, so anyone here who's interested could hear you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My wife always tells me to be too loud, so.
That's who you need to listen to.
Well, she's not here tonight.
You are interviewing for the planning, speak. The floor is yours.
Well, I'll start by introducing myself, I'm Ben Gervey. I moved to town with my wife just over a year ago. We moved from Barnard, where we were for about five years, and before that, we were in an even smaller town, a middle town springs west of Rutland. So we've been gradually moving to larger, larger municipalities. In, in Barnard, I, in Barnard, I've joined and served on the energy committee in town. Energy is, energy, climate change, environmental sciences, is my, my academic background, and has been my professional background. Once upon a time, as an undergraduate, I thought I might get into urban planning and design, but found myself in Vermont, so there isn't too much of that, so, but, but I could maybe scratch that itch a bit on the planning commission. I'm particularly interested in, in helping in whatever way I can with the, the energy planning and the energy plan for the towns. Michael did share the latest chapter of the, the newly revised chapter of the, the energy checker for the town plan, so I've been able to give that a look over, and it's, uh, it's impressive, and I would like to, yeah, say, I know how hard those things are to write, because we worked on one in Barnard while I was on the committee there, so. It's, uh, obviously a challenging time for energy issues in Vermont, we have these legislated goals that all municipalities must work on achieving, and, um, every town, you know, seems to want to do their part, but it's difficult in practice when you get to these renewable energy citing issues. So, um, I do believe there are, uh, good, uh, solu, healthy solutions that work for the community at large and work for individual landowners, um, and meanwhile can save towns a lot of money in the meantime, so. I could go on and on, but.
Whatever interest you have, aside from energy, in the planning arena?
In the planning arena? Well, transportation is, um, that's what I work on now most directly, uh, it's, I think of transportation as an energy issue, that's the lens through it, through which I, I look at it, so. Uh, in Vermont, um, I believe something like 40 to 50% of our energy use is in the transportation sector, so that's a massive, um, thing, and, and obviously, we're not going to, uh, replace a lot of the big vehicles we have here, um, because we need them, we need them to get around in the rural, cold, snowy environment, so, um, we, uh, yeah, transportation's a massive issue, and we're not, you know, some, some advocate for, you know, mass transit to take over, you know, everywhere, but it's difficult in Vermont, and we have to understand what our particular needs are as Vermonters, and how we can reduce our fossil fuel impacts from the vehicles that we do drive and that we do rely on.
Anybody else?
So I just want to clarify, you are, have been a guest lecturer at Vermont Law School, but you're not a lawyer, or you are a lawyer?
Not a lawyer.
Not a lawyer, okay.
Nope, nope, I, um, was a guest lecturer there, and I led a research team there, um, and I still have the title, though I'm not technically working on it this fall, might start again in the spring, but I'm leading a research team on transportation policy, so.
And then, I mean, you, you're aware of the fact that the, what comes before the planning commission is obviously all sorts of things, like housing, and, as I said, you know, various types of zoning changes, Act 250, raising of, you know, all of that, so, the energy portion, I don't know how much time that actually takes up, but lately, a lot, actually.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
I, I'll just say that Ben did come to a planning commission meeting a couple months ago, and it was not one of our more exciting meetings, and he sat there for an hour and a half and listened in, so he, he, he knows that it's not all really, like, exciting stuff.
And he did get into affordable housing discussion, I think.
Right, I mean, some of the issues that come up are, do relate to younger people in the north area, which you may have some insights on, and affordability and all this stuff.
We are one of these families who had our eye on Woodstock for many years, and, you know, couldn't necessarily make the move work from a financial standpoint for a while, and it took us basically flipping a house that we lived in for five years in Barnard, and, you know, doing well enough on that to, you know, fixing it up and then selling it to be able to afford to move here. Meanwhile, most of our, our friends that were ma, making in town are young families, and, you know, teachers in the local school system, my daughter's best friends, both their parents, set parents have sets of teachers in these local school districts, and it was difficult for everyone to find their homes in the district, so that, those issues certainly do matter a lot to me.
What else do you think you have to offer to the planning commission?
I, it, I don't know what the schedule is with the, the town plan and those at this point, but I, I do have a lot of experience writing, so communications skills to what, whatever degree those are needed to, that is.
So Sally and Mike are excited.
That's the core of my work, so, in terms of parts, skills, communications, writing, editing, um, and, and, you know, various communication work. I'm just, I'm, at the bottom line, I have energy to put towards this serving the community, I, I feel it's important, we've been here for a year now, I know we're still new to town, but, um, we're in for the long haul, we're not going anywhere. We bought another fixer-upper, so we're, we're on the front end of, of that process now, we're, we're gonna be here till.
You're gonna be able to afford to stay here.
Yeah, we're gonna be here through, through high school for both of our young children, my son, my, my daughter's five and my son is three, we are, we're here for, for the long haul, yeah, as long as we can afford to stay, and so the sustainability, um, and, uh, you know, success of the community is important in our household.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I, I think we talked about our process being to, um, decide this when we meet with the trustees, we're meeting this tomorrow.
I think, according to what I read, the trustees have already approved.
Except that it's a joint decision, and since we are meeting tomorrow, we'd like to make this decision at, at a different meeting where we can all talk.
Yeah.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
My pleasure, yeah, you can email me with any follow up.
Okay, thank you.
So Ben, this term is, if you're the selected, this term is through 2020, 2022, a full four year.
Four years?
Okay, so we'll skip over the EDC, I guess, move on. Oh!
Gotcha.
Don't you dare.
What's the board's motion?
I have two pieces.
I think we have two pieces, one is just an update and a request, and the other is from the revitalization committee. So you should have received the Economic Development Commission Coordinator's report, and you have that before you, there's only two specific actions that we're gonna ask for you to do this evening, and answer any questions that you may have. So the two requests that we had is, in our latest round of grant financing requests, we received many different requests, uh, five different ones, and they're all over the map, from someone looking for monies to fix up the childcare center, to increase the number of beds available for infants, um, to also an EC fiber outreach campaign to get more residents to actually sign up for EC fiber. Some of those requests were withdrawn, um, EC fiber withdrew their request, um, it was a matter of timing and also a matter of what that looked like. We were in favor of trying to get more people in those areas where EC fiber is going, to get people to sign up, this is not just a marketing thing, so we were in favor of that. We had a request from Sustainable Woodstock for making green bags and making them available to replace disposable bags, and we were looking for more participation from a local, um, grocery store or another store that would do that. Received a request from the Woodstock Christian Childcare for $5,000 to help improve that infant care area, and we had run into some discussions about is it appropriate or legal for town funds to fund a childcare center located in a church? And we've received some opinions on that, but we need to have the wording carefully done, we're talking about 2019.
Legal opinions, not just pedestrian opinions.
Not just pedestrian opinions.
I'm sure everybody has one.
Yes, that is very true, uh, actually, two members of our board, of our commission, took great individual effort to vet out whether or not it was legal or not legal for a town. A couple of towns in Vermont have been sued, um, when they have funded, um, a facility that was a religious building, and so that we don't want to put you in the position of being sued.
Thank you.
So we're trying to do some of the homework for you, and word anything carefully enough so that you don't have to actually entertain that.
The building or the program?
That is the distinguishing factor. It doesn't prevent you from actually being sued, but it means that you might prevail. So, uh, in the cases that we studied, I think one was the town of Cabot, that actually did fund the facade of a church. Now, it wasn't actually promoting the religious doctrine or anything else, but they were brought to court because town funds were used to actually fund the improvement of the facade. So now we're, we want to be careful to make sure that doesn't happen, so there is a, a body of law that will decide whether or not, if you are ever sued for, the town is, I should say, that you would actually be, uh, in the right on that, as, as far as the courts are concerned. The last one that we had was for a community visioning process, and this is a group of individuals that have requested that the town engage in a new community visioning process, as you recall, it was 2006, when Vermont Council on Rural Development did their last community visioning process, it led to a number of different projects. So they've actually come out with an RFP. We encouraged the group to actually solicit, uh, some costs from people that could lead this community visioning process before we actually make a recommendation on the dollar amount. We thought it was a good time to do this, and not to supplant any other acti, uh, any other initiatives that are being taken now, whether it's renovating the town hall, the revitalization of the community, um, the village, you know, community, uh, central business district, sorry, I'm trying to remember what the C stood for. So anyway, it wouldn't replace that, so that's not for you to discuss, or for, to vote on tonight, we'll be bringing that back once there is an RFP in hand. So the, the one that we did have is, uh, you'll see that, uh, DU, WUHS Apparel, the original line was, uh, request for, was for $5,000, um, and this is really a request to, um, fund a student effort, um, directed by parents to actually create WHS logoed gear, and that is not with a WASP on it, but the high school, or with Woodstock on it, to sell those, and then to, um, generate a good business. a good business experience for those involved. So we, the EDC recommended that a loan be made to this group as a way of actually engaging in a business process, like an entrepreneurial program, very carefully because we don't want the Economic Development Commission to be the backstop for any kind of booster activity at the high school in terms of requesting grants. So we looked at it at the lens of can these students actually gain business acumen and business skills through the process of doing this? So our recommendation was to make them a loan for $1,776.
And is that loan sufficient to get the business going?
It is.
Keep it going?
It is. Now, they might have another run where they want to produce a second line of clothing for a different season, and at that point in time, we did not close the door, but said come back to us. Now, it could be that they generate enough cash from that first run that they fold into it. This is not affiliated with any particular program being run at the high school, this is a group of individual students. We are in contact with Mascoma Bank, we've been talking to them for a while about establishing a community revolving loan fund, and this type of thing might be better suited with that. So they have expressed interest in working with us in that, but we don't have that set up at this point in time.
So are we going to loan them at zero interest?
Zero.
Is this the time to ask you questions, Charlie?
Sure.
When they came to the EDC, I was here that night, I watched the presentation, they requested $5,000 in a grant and you're arranging a loan for 1776 at zero percent interest. I understand that they've removed the symbol of the WASP.
Yes.
So it is not connected to the sports teams at the school. Are they going to have WUHS MS on it or not?
I think their main focus is just to look at Woodstock, not WUHS MS. I might be corrected differently, I don't think it was-
I think it's just Woodstock.
We're gonna say Woodstock, great. I know that all the experience that they're going to get from this will be very beneficial. I understand they've had good mentoring from Travis at the Optimist Center as well. But I'm really disappointed when I look at your financial report, and it's quite thorough, and I see all the money that's been given in grants to arrange these children's first experience, and I think it's going to be a good business experience, but to arrange a loan for them when you've given a lot of grant money disappoints me extremely.
Well, I understand your position.
Thank you.
We are, we can, we take our role very seriously in administering the funds for economic development. The tie between this particular request and economic development really couldn't be made unless you tie in the business education aspect of it. And that, for us, was very key. If we had somebody else coming to us to finance our inventory, we would generally not do that. We haven't, we're not set up to do it, and this is a stretch for us, honestly. So I understand your position saying you're disappointed that it's a grant, it's not a grant but a loan, but we felt that we needed to take on the role of saying, is this actually advancing economic development and could this be used for other purposes?
I hope that this loan is paid, is it a six-month?
Yes.
Term that you have negotiated, that you are negotiating. I hope that somewhere in the future, once they're successful in repaying this, there'll be a way that they could be given a grant for some additional work that they-
Joel's got a question.
Thank you.
Joe has a question in the back, Charlie.
Well, not a question so much as a comment. I mean, I was at the meeting when they initially requested the $5,000, as you were in it, and my rationale for supporting that was I felt it was a great learning experience for these kids. Now, that hadn't been said, if it's gonna be, in my view, in my opinion, a thorough learning experience, I don't, I know it didn't happen to me, probably didn't happen to Jeff, nobody gave me any money to start a business. I had to go out and vote and ask and prove that, you know, that it was viable and that my business would succeed and that the loan would be back. I think that's part of the learning process, so I, I would support a loan instead of, here you go, kids, have some fun.
Jeffrey?
I like what Joe just said, actually.
Don't be such a fuck.
No, I liked other things Joe said. I like what he just said. But I, I'm just curious, Charlie, what if the loan is not repaid? What is, what's the provision at the end of six months? Let's say they fail, they haven't made any money, the hats are sitting in their closets at home, what happens?
I'd say they wouldn't get any more.
Because if, because if there's no penalty, then it's a grant.
As is consistent with any loan made at a community level by a town, there is an inherent risk involved with this. Yes, there is no guarantee it will be repaid, but the process of going through this and vetting out their process and buying the merchandise, what their timeframe is like and everything else, really demonstrates that they do have the intent, they have the guidance, and they have the business case in order to make it work. I can't tell you 100% it's gonna be repaid.
Right, so, so I think it's a good learning experience, and if it fails, it will have turned into a grant.
I know that, I know that, Jeff, but-
You said if it does fail, you only lose 1,700.
Say, I would pay $1,700 to have these kids learn a lesson, come to several of the EDC meetings, have to get up in front of grownups and make a presentation, maybe come and say that they failed, which is really hard.
Of course it is.
I wish, I will just, for the record, and I, you know, you all feel the same way, but I wish that the school system with its $20 million budget would also find 1,500 bucks to do this, but we can step up where they do not, where they do not.
What size hat do you wear, Charlie?
I'm sorry?
What size hat do you wear? Because I probably buy all my own.
So they won't fail, Jeff?
They're not gonna fail, I'm not gonna let them.
That's right, she won't work.
I won't be in the shop for Christmas, Jeff. I'll be buying them and selling them in the store.
Oh, no, you know, I think about consignment.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd say that our recommendation is to loan the $1,776 to Woodstock Apparel.
Sally's got it. We're not, this is not actually a, we're not asking for-
Approval.
Approval for a loan, we're asking for approval for the 1,776, because what's gonna happen is Mascoma's gonna set up a contract, and these guys are probably going to be working with Mascoma. These funds will be the guarantee for that loan, and they will also cover any expenses. So Mascoma's not necessarily going to give them a zero percent loan, so there may be some interest and, you know, fees involved with it. So this, this is essentially asking for the money and then working with Mascoma, it will either be the guarantee or in the end, it may be the funds for the loan, but I think the Mascoma deal is going to come through.
Does it sound like if, what, these actually do a guaranteed loan from Mascoma?
So I'll make a move.
Wait, hold on just a second, are you, hang on just a second, are you finished?
I understand the mechanics, but again, going back to the, what happens if they don't repay the loan is that you lose the CD. So in essence, it is asking for the 1,776.
Right, but, yeah, and I'm talking, I'm thinking about how this works in terms of the municipality, the way we have set up the EDC funds is we have a, an account for each one of these grants that we give. So what would happen is that this money would go into that account and then be used for whatever way it needs to be done. I don't think it'll-
So it's like escrow?
It'll be more like-
Collar.
So whose, whose, whose account does the money go into?
It will go into an account, it will be in the EDC account.
It will sit there.
It will sit there, like we have other people that have received grants, the money is sitting in that account until they use it.
I think it's lovely that we're testing out the system on 1,776 dollars.
Why not 78?
It's more patriotic this way.
Right. Any further discussion, any more comments? Now, Jill.
It doesn't fire me, Charlie.
So I'd like to propose a motion to approve $1,776 for the WUH apparel project.
Motion's been made, do I hear a second?
After all that, you're not gonna second it, Mary?
I don't feel good.
Okay, I'll second.
Please.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, we reserve it.
Two nays. Thank you.
The second-
Thanks for your comments, everybody.
The second thing for your, hopefully, encouragement and voice of support is that the legislature did pass in the last legislative session something called Act 194 is what became law, and included in that was a outdoor recreation friendly community program, which allocated $100,000 for the Department of Parks and Recreation to allocate to communities who applied that would demonstrate that they were a recreation friendly community already in some respect, but would, could use grant monies to increase their assets, to increase their recreation in their area. In conjunction with our contemplation about the River Loop Trail, we're looking to obtain funds from that particular fund to potentially acquire easements on the River Loop Trail as proposed from the existing landowners. We don't have those agreements in hand, we're just applying for the grants. If we don't ever proceed to that, then we won't use the money, but we're looking for support from the select board in it, for this application that we're making, which is due December 14th.
And you just want us to have a thought?
Yes.
I would make a motion to support that, I think a lot of people in the community want that loop.
And I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded that we support that. Any further discussion?
Could I just ask a question?
You may, just a question.
If others in town want access to this money, we have to apply as a municipality?
I think the idea is that we would approach anybody that we know of, so that may just be the mountain bike association, I don't know who else might be potential partners, but it would be, if you know of anybody, let me know and I will, you know, reach out to them so that we can put in one. But this is due-
That's who I thought of, but I don't know, I mean, would the Billings Park Commission ever try to, I mean, they don't need money, but everybody always needs money, so, you know.
Right, so we'll, we'll-
Or, or JMH, whatever, you know.
Yeah, yeah, true.
I don't know.
The East End?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are a few, I just wondered if you alert them, who knows?
True.
Get that pump track back. Okay, that was my only question.
Any further discussion? Ready for the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Just before you move on, there's one last thing for you, is we will have a budget number for you for the website. We're moving into discussions with the Chamber of Commerce about the maintenance of woodstockbt.com. We had a very good discussion this morning and are working on an updated memorandum of understanding that recognizes the needs of the chamber, the needs of the town, and promoting Woodstock to its visitors and residents and potential residents. So that's, we will be having, getting a number to you. Can't share with you what that number is yet because the budget is still being worked on and finalized, but we're getting much closer.
Are we having some fast selling advertising and?
There, we've had some structural impediments to the sale of advertising because-
Hard to find people to sell it.
Uh, not only people to sell it, but the, the financial incentive necessarily for the chamber to sell advertising hasn't been in place, and to be quite candid about that. I mean, so we want to make sure that, that the chamber benefits from this and the town benefits from it, and I think we're moving towards a situation where both parties agree.
Good, I hope so.
Oh, we have a question for the, for you. Are we doing anything to promote business, small business to come here? Are we doing anything as that, is that not your role? You know, we don't get people, we don't get a lot of things if we don't have small business or business. Are we doing anything or is that not your role?
Well, that's a very good question. So we took, yes, we are, is a short answer to it. Part of promoting Woodstock to potential residents and visitors is also promoting Woodstock to those potential new business owners that may want to relocate here. So that is one piece of that, is to make sure that the content that is published on the website and the blog actually talks about what kind of businesses are located here, here's the success here. And that's a social media program as well as the website, so it's not just having a website, there's other content that's being developed. And I feel good about the content that we actually have developed so far, it's a concept of inbound marketing. If you're asking about are we going out and actively recruiting certain businesses to move here because of a perceived need, we're not, and we're not doing that. We've had conversations with landlords about what can you do to rent out your space? We came up with an incentive program to help new retailers locate into the Central Business District. We've worked on a housing study to help developers develop affordable housing that will also help meet some of the perceived need or real need, which is a lack of affordable housing or marketplace, or market priced housing. Those are all pieces of that that go together with it, and, but in terms of are we actually actively recruiting new businesses to come in, the answer is no.
Any further questions or?
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. What? All right.
What, you're looking right at me, pal?
Yeah, that means you're next.
Ray's gonna, you don't know who he's what.
Yeah?
He's gonna distribute some digital stuff. That'd be nice to put that, we can talk about. I'm gonna push back a little bit on what Charlie said, in terms of-
Took all the time.
In terms of how we do anything to promote-
I didn't get it all.
Promote local businesses and try to get more people to come into town and start businesses. And I'll, I'll do that by sharing a couple of stories, personal stories, at the cafe, where I have met people, and I've said this before, and there's been additional stories since then, that have come here but never been here before. And a couple of examples I can give you is a family from Hawaii who's had a trip to Germany, a business trip, and on the way back, they decided to peruse their way through the Lower 48, and they looked at Google and they said, you know, I guess they Googled pretty towns in Vermont and Woodstock came up. So as a result of that, those people came to Woodstock, stayed for three or four days, they spent, spent two nights at DM, had three meals at Monver, I think they went to Jeff's store and, and bought a couple things, you just mentioned that, Jeff, or something like that? And then there was another couple from England, same kind of story. So what we're doing here, I mean, the reason I got involved with this project was to do just that, to make the town attractive enough, so that people would come here, and if enough people came here, it's gonna put a demand on, on the commercial district to accommodate the population that comes here as a result of being a nice looking town. So, I mean, and that's what this is about from my perspective, and that's why I'm involved with it, okay? So, I don't wanna be too redundant, but, you know, we raised $20,000 to get to a consulting firm. Last June 6th, there was a community meeting, and the question was simply, what do you think is priorities? What do you think is important? What should we start? In your view, because this is your town, where do you want us to go with this? Well, overwhelmingly, at that initial meeting, the topics seemed to be sidewalks, what to do about the sidewalks? So as a result of that June 6th- So as a result of that June sixth meeting, Dubois, Duvois, how am I pronouncing it? What is Duvois? Duvois and Kane focused their energy on sidewalks primarily, other stuff, of course, but sidewalks primarily because that's what the community wanted. So a result of that, you have in front of you what they came up with in terms of which sidewalks were in town, needed the most attention, how much it was going to cost.
Can you help us get to that as well?
That's the last page.
Last page. There it is. You got it right there, friend. Okay, now, we can get back to that. So we had a luncheon last night. I think it was pretty well-attended, wouldn't you think, Jeff? Yeah, well, doesn't, doesn't
Some of the business community.
Business community was in there. And we discussed the sidewalk situation. There were a lot of questions about that, you know, where to start, who to start, how much it would cost. And we kind of covered that, and I'm sure you're going to have questions in that area, and we'll do the best to answer those. And then they went on to, okay, we talked about sidewalks, what's next? Well, then it kind of extrapolated into what about stuff like benches, furnishings, trash cans, crosswalks, lighting, and all this other stuff. Well, as I said, when it was twenty thousand dollars, that pretty much got eaten up by doing the sidewalk thing and other stuff with it. I think it got to almost sixteen thousand dollars, not counting what it would cost for last next meeting and the meeting that Randy and Beth went up to, and Sally went up to Randolph and them folks. So, last night after this meeting, I sat down with the representative, Sonia Sophie Sorel, and I said, okay, well, here where we are, there's still other issues to talk about. It's coming near the end of the contract. The contract expires the end of December. What's it going to cost to finish up on this report, and when can you get it done? Well, this is about twenty-four hours ago, and I asked her to get me a number if, you know, we could, we could present it in case you had that question. So she came back and she sent me an email this morning, what it would cost to finish up the report. I think it was like sixty, seven hundred dollars. And I guess we'll be coming back, you know, we'll go before the EDC and try to raise that money from them and then
Six beyond her original contract?
I'm sorry? Beyond original contract, correct. Right. You got to work, go ahead and give it up.
Yeah, because I thought that we contracted for her to come with a complete proposal, so she hasn't, since she hasn't, they failed to meet their contracts.
Well, you know what? We can end it now.
This isn't the product we paid for.
What?
This isn't the product we paid for. The contract said, I don't have the document with me, but I thought the contract laid out a timetable and an end product, and this is not the end product.
No, that's, you're correct about that. It's not the complete end product. But there are some discussions there about, you know, what to do with. I guess because, again, I wasn't at the June sixth meeting, but I guess because there was such an emphasis on sidewalks, they really delved into it and measured, took photographs, looked at everything, and that just ate up a lot of money.
Yeah, but when you hire a consultant, you pay for a project. You don't pay for a number of hours.
So what are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting that we say to them, we have a look at the contract that we signed with them, and say, and have a look, did we actually contract a number of hours, or did we contract for a final project, product?
Okay.
Because as a consultant, if you don't do the job in a certain number of hours, you've either ridden a leeway into a contract, which we can see, and then we're just within the contract, or you eat the costs.
It was my, it was my understanding that we were going to get a final report for the money that we had available.
And we can't, but it won't be as inclusive and answer some of the more in-depth answers to some of the questions that are still up.
So if we have other answers, we would pay more money.
So what, do you have the contract with you?
I don't have one.
So why don't we take a look at the contract before we
Okay.
carry, decide how to, whether more money or not more money.
So we're going to end it?
No, this, I want to understand what this is.
Okay.
You're not on the payroll, so go ahead.
Okay, what is specifically your question?
Were you just giving it to us? Would you like to take us through it, or do you want us to go?
Ray, why don't you go through it?
Okay, the first, this case here is basically what the town, when we had the public meeting, what their issues were. And it's obviously, you know, sidewalks, potholes, storefronts, maybe crosswalks, safer, number of things. And then you flip it over, this kind of just gives you an overall
Just one question before we go over it. So this list in the middle, are these in any priority order? Or order of a number of comments or anything like that?
No, they're just, they're just comments that were made. And then the other, the back just gives you an idea of the different spots and towns that they looked at, that people, you know, some of the highlights, some of the lowlights. The signage needs to obviously be improved. You have it broke, the river. You know, there's a lot of positive things in the back, but there's also like you're doing the Teagle's Landing, that needs work. So there's a combination of both.
So, so Ray, we're on the backside of this.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand. Open space behind the Woodstock History Center, what does that mean to us?
That's just an area that's, that can be improved on, or get better public use on, or basically better public use.
She was very excited about that hidden place.
Yeah.
Can I just? That we're missing one step. So you had the meeting on the sixth of June where there were
A room full of people.
The green full of people, and then they used the old place. And, but then, I think about six weeks after that, sometime in July, early August, we met at the
At the Good Health Foundation Room.
Right, at the Health Foundation Room. And that's when I think the group, which was a little shrunk, came up with the sidewalks as the priority.
And, and I don't know because, you know, I just took this, Joe and I just took this over.
We were at that meeting.
Right.
I don't know that sidewalks became number one from that meeting.
Well, there was a big, sidewalks were the major issue and discussion point. But I don't know what happened after that meeting. Whether they were given direction to go out and prepare this spreadsheet, or whether they did it on their own. I have no way to tell.
I don't think it's wasted effort.
No, no, but I'm just saying, I have no, I have no idea how they went from a general overview completely to specific costs or sidewalks.
And then last night's meeting was, as part of the contract, which should have happened earlier, but we lost, I think we lost some momentum with the chair of the committee kind of going AWOL. And so Ray picked it up with Sally's help. And we were able to pull off before December, a meeting with the downtown merchants, such as it was. And that was part of the contract. And now, my understanding is she's, she's going to come back with a final product.
So did the downtown merchants go for the sidewalks as number one?
It was presented that way.
I mean, this project has definitely suffered because there's sort of been a rotating cast of characters, which happens. There's no point in pointing fingers. But the question, I think, about the contract is relevant. You know, do we have to pay for that because the ball was dropped on our side? Or, you know, maybe because they didn't have to do much work in the later summer months? Maybe they can eat it, because, you know.
But I do think that they saw the sidewalks as a discussion point that they could easily work on.
Right.
And that's why they went ahead on the sidewalks and produced a really good document about sidewalks because it was something that they, I think they felt that there was enough feedback that people really felt strongly about the sidewalks. And they also knew that as, that we were presenting to the Select Board, that that would be of interest to the Select.
So will you keep taking us through the sidewalks?
Yep.
And wait, one second. And then the final piece of that is that there is the paving plan that they also knew about.
The twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, and how that might relate or not.
Oh, it's good that they're aware.
Right, because that's, that's a big discussion.
I, you know, I kind of agree with you that, you know.
They were aware of it before last night.
Say what, Jeff?
They knew twenty twenty-one, right?
They're aware of it now.
But if, if I had been totally involved right straight through the whole process, I probably would agree with you guys and say, you know, we're spending too much time on sidewalks. There's other things to talk about.
I don't think we said that.
Huh?
We haven't said that.
No, you haven't said that, but it sounds like
I'm just trying to understand why sidewalks became the number one.
Twenty thousand dollars is going to be spent on, you know, primarily what to do with sidewalks. And I would, I would agree that there's probably a little bit too overemphasis on sidewalks. But that's the way it is, and I was asked to pick it up and give me that, and we're going to go with it.
So take us through sidewalks.
Okay, so if you look at the slide sheet, and A, which is the smaller sheet, should be the first smaller sheet in your packet.
Second A?
Yeah. That shows you the ADA compliances, where they're lacking, what needs to be done to bring them up to ADA standards, which is a five-foot sidewalk. And basically, if you look at A, it's twelve hundred and eighty feet long, seventy-five hundred square feet. They tell you what percent goes over driveways, what area needs to be widened to five feet, twenty square feet, and then they give you the estimated cost for that sidewalk. Now, this is, this is all concrete. And again, I don't know where, somebody said replace asphalt with concrete, but that's what they have for pricing. So asphalt, I'm assuming, and I'm pretty sure will be less money than concrete.
Oh, yeah.
So the total is a hundred and nine thousand to do that little stretch?
Yep. Well, you say little stretch, but you're talking about this linear feet.
Right. Where does the widening come from, the grass?
ADA standards.
No, is the extra width taken from the grass that's there now?
That is part of the surveying plan, and
Yeah.
it would have to come from the street side because we're not going to approach on the residents or the businesses.
So just for comparison, do we have any idea of what concrete versus asphalt is?
I don't.
More than half.
More than half, probably.
Less than half. Well, they're looking at this piece essentially from the town hall up to the covered bridge.
Yes.
On this one, yes, yeah.
Well, it goes beyond the covered bridge. It goes all the way up to People's Bank.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you're going to remove all of that asphalt, widen to five feet, build an asphalt sidewalk, it would be less than half of a hundred and nine thousand in concrete.
So say fifty thousand?
I would, off the top of my head, but I don't have access to all the details.
Well, there's a design fee as well, so probably you still incur that.
Considerably less.
So what is, what is being asked of us tonight? I don't want to get deep in the weeds.
A review. We were asked to give you
All of these streets are proposed as concrete.
We're not here to debate.
Right, I don't want to.
Right.
You know, this is part of their presentation.
Got it, got it. So what's the next, what is the next step?
Yeah, that's, that's the good question.
That is, I would, I would say the next step is what Joe suggested. Final, look at the contract, see what it says.
Yeah.
And go from there. That's what I would suggest.
Beth?
What was suggested, thank you Sally, was that at the December, whenever your meeting is, December
The next meeting, the budget meeting.
should be warned as a public meeting for the presentation of her final report.
But the final report, my assumption is, because we lost, the time we lost will not be
Comprehensive.
Already.
December eighteenth will be on.
Although you said the timeframe.
When?
When we were in November.
Yeah, but she said, right, but to make sure it's comprehensive and includes everything, may not be ready. That was my understanding.
And then there's, then there's a huge next question, which is how do we pay? If this is just the sidewalks and then you add on everything else, has the EDC
When you say everything else, what?
Trash bins, seats, signage.
We don't have that yet. This is what we're waiting.
Are we going to have those by December eighteen?
Well, that's what you're saying. You're not sure.
I, my guess is no.
I would, I would say that we should wait until we have a final report before we go any further. What do you think?
Well, I think there's one question that might be relevant for the EDC to start discussing, which is have you got any money to contribute to this?
No.
Well, I see quite a lot of money.
As far as I, as far as I can see, one thing, once the final report is in, however that's decided to be done, whether, you know, you look at the contract that says that ended here, or you decide, okay, we're going to give you an extension.
No, excuse me.
Wait a minute, Joe, wait a minute. Let me finish my statement. Let me finish my statement.
Why have you misunderstood me, though? So perhaps should I correct myself, correct what I was trying to say before you disagree with me there? Or if that's something I wasn't saying?
Well, I haven't disagreed or agreed with you yet. I just like to say what I wanted to say, all right? And I would think, at that point, you say, then, then it's ended, as far as I can see. Because the only way you can move forward after the report is completed is if you have money to do it, and we don't have it.
Well, we're going into the budget season. And the, in December and January, we want to be putting in some money, and probably putting in some money for sidewalks, because we've got two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty to do sidewalk work before the road is repaved.
Okay.
So we want to have a real discussion about how are we going to pay for sidewalk work, whatever the work is we have done. And my question to the EDC will be, have you got any funds that you can put in towards sidewalk work?
And I don't think we can speak for the
No, so I'm asking you to have a discussion in the next EDC meeting about that.
Okay.
And then we can have a real discussion in December.
Bye.
So if I'm reading this correctly, all the area downtown is currently concrete sidewalk. You're not doing anything to it.
Correct.
Not leveling them or improving them?
Not the concrete.
Uh, no.
There was, there was conversation on
There's conversations of it, but there's
By the bank on Elm Street.
Yeah, I wasn't there last night. I couldn't make it, but
Oh, by T.
Yeah, by T D Bank.
Not to tear them up or anything.
Guessing that what they're trying to tell us is that concrete is more aesthetically pleasing than asphalt.
Right.
Just clarify that.
They do have Elm Street.
I like Elm Street myself.
And, and so there is some, some word there for Elm Street.
I'd like to see a final report.
Are you still on the EDC, Joe?
Well, thank you, thanks for stepping back in. I, we're stepping in at all.
I was asked to step in.
I see you inherited some of it.
I just want to put a caution in that, let's not go for a final report at the cost of missing the budget cycle.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Let's not go for a beautiful-looking final report that misses the budget cycle. Because otherwise, you miss a whole twelve months of work.
Right, when is the budget cycle?
December and January.
Well, you've got part of the budget cycle. If it's just going to be sidewalks we're going to work on, you have something to stop with.
Right, I don't know that it is just a sidewalk.
Right, that was the question, that was my, that was my question. We have some numbers for sidewalks, but, I mean, if you're asking the EDC to contribute funds, there's that fine line of doing sort of improvement projects that are more municipal-oriented as opposed to more beautification-type projects, and whether things like trash bins and benches might be more, more in line with what the EDC, now I'm
And perhaps a beautification could be concrete versus asphalt. Because we could be functional municipal people paying, so we'll do asphalt. And then, does the EDC really care about concrete?
Right.
This is the conversation that needs to happen. This is the conversation that needs to happen.
But, but what I'm trying to get from you is what is really important, is it, is it a dollar number or is it a dollar number attached to a particular project?
It's probably a dollar, it's, it's a dollar number, but we need to have enough information that when we have our big discussion about what's gonna stay in, what's gonna go out, what has to move around, we know what we're, what's that word? Propo.
She needs.
Proposing, yeah.
But I also think it's important to talk about the philosophical, who's paying for it? Because that, that helps inform any future decision about anything like that.
It's a big discussion coming next.
Thank you.
Uh.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion, if not, we'll move on.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, so.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hold business. Do you have the number of business?
Just wanna report that FEMA has approved, after the summer flooding from July first seventeen, FEMA has approved the work on those two bridges on the Palm Creek Road. And we've already bid it out, Daniel's is the low bidder, they've got room in their schedule, and FEMA's agreed to pay.
Great.
I just never want to sign the contract until FEMA says they pay.
Is this it?
Yes, two of them.
Yeah, that's Palm Creek Road Bridges, yeah.
Bridge one and Bridge two.
Yeah.
FEMA has approved it.
They have approved it.
They have approved it.
Yeah, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we got two bids here, and both of them are Daniele's Construction's low. So I make a motion, they accept the two bids, they seem to be.
Okay.
Very good.
I second that motion, this is work we have to have done.
Motion's been made to second it, we accept Daniel's proposal bid. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. The next one is the Green Mountain Power Tassville Project. Really, I was looking at that packet today with Phil, and that really doesn't pertain to us, even though we got the information from Green Mountain Power. They're doing is they're building a transmission line. They are starting at their substation in Tassville. And we own about the length of this room from that substation to the town of Heartland. So this project is basically down, a little bit down Route four and then down Route twelve. So it doesn't have any effect on us that I can see.
Nothing on the residents of Tassville?
Not really, they're, they're just.
Did you, did you read it, Sally?
I have not.
Okay. It's, they're talking about increasing the height of poles by ten feet and twenty-five feet.
If you've been down the Route twelve, you'll see where they're sticking those poles higher all the way down through.
They're doing it.
Coming this way.
Yeah, same location.
So it's, I, I see it affecting maybe one pole in the town of Woodstock.
Twenty-five feet, this just seems huge.
Well, they did it all on.
There's not much in the town of Woodstock there.
It's just what they do now.
I see one pole in town.
These are state highways, they're not our local highways.
So this is just notice, this is just for your information.
But we don't have any input.
I don't see, I have anything there. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. So the next is the, on the agenda is the parade, parade permit for the proudie. Is there anybody here to speak on that, anybody?
No.
Can you talk about it for a sec?
Sure you can talk about it.
I have, no, I have no idea.
Do you want to see the letter and tape?
We're just, we're just wondering what it is.
So am I.
Proudie.
Well, I know what the proudie is, but in Woodstock, that's okay, that's.
So it's not, it's not really a parade.
It's bicycle.
It is, it is the race.
Okay.
Right, so it's just a rite of way to use our.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not like a band and a, you know.
Well, that's kind of.
No, I know, it's what it sounds like, right?
Yes.
No.
It's not the.
It is the proudie.
Okay.
For people who want to do the proudie.
For the ultimate, the ultimate proudie.
Exactly, here, exactly.
So they will be approaching Woodstock on a river road from Queaching, Palm Creek, and then right on Route twelve to Barnet.
During what sale, don't worry about it, just another parade.
Maybe the taste of Woodstock.
Yeah, exactly, right down.
So I'd propose a motion to accept this?
I would second.
Motion's been made with, seconded to accept it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay.
Can I, can I just, before the construction goes away, did they pave North Street? Did they get to use that one day to?
The highway department did it above foot of the street going across North Street and across River Street. We got fingers crossed that somebody can come in on Wednesday and do the middle section of North Street.
Wednesday.
Tomorrow?
No, Wednesday.
Tomorrow. It's supposed to warm up there.
Yep.
It gets really cold.
Missed it by that much.
I know, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes.
Can I make a citizen comment before you go to sewer?
We're not down to citizens' comments yet, let's see now with you, yes.
I just wanted to let you know, through the village, the village had a beautification fund, and we've been able to work with chippers and timber tenders this year to do the trees and pay for the light, the chambers paid for the lights, or the town has paid, or the village has paid for the lights through the chamber. We've coordinated with them, but it's taken both of them to do it this year because chippers didn't have the time to donate. And Al, who also did the memory tree.
Five years of the road, I think.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let people know that as a donation.
Thank you, chippers and timber tender.
And while we're doing comments, the lights on the green look really good.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, EDC.
And select board, and Woodstock.
But the, the final thing was EDC and their help was crucial in the end.
Very nice.
Progress, visual progress.
All right, can we move on?
Yes.
Okay. You have to stay for the rest of the meeting, see, and I won't let you go. So the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
I'm sure they can ask it tomorrow.
Do you have anything for the Board of Sewer Commissioners?
Beth.
Beth.
Sewer Commissioners?
Phil must have some.
Not tonight.
I have enough.
Oh, wow.
Nothing.
Yay.
Okay. Not tonight.
Any other business?
I have one.
Yeah.
Christmas Eve is on a Monday, and often, we're allowed to close town hall by about noon or one o'clock on Christmas Eve. I'm suggesting that the town hall be closed on Christmas Eve and people be allowed to not take vacation or personal time for that. And that way.
They can leave on Friday.
It's a Monday, it's a Monday. Or you can come in and work and be quiet and just have the peace to yourself, do your work if you so desire.
So the door, the, the office won't be open?
There'll be a sign on the door that the office will be closed, and we'll put that up ahead of time so that it's not a surprise.
You didn't last, yeah.
On that day.
And were there any citizen comments that came through?
No complaints that I heard.
I'd tell you why the hesitation, because we are a town that has many second homeowners and many second homeowners come up then, and it's really frustrating to have a town office closed on a holiday or on a day that's not a holiday when a second homeowner is here.
May I just say that in experience, Christmas Eve is not such a busy day here where New Year's Eve definitely is, with people trying to get things done on the last possible day of the year. And I've observed that over the years.
So we have to stay up for New Year's Eve?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And we're open on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I, I, I would like to give this gift to employees, I think that's something we can do.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, just a recommendation and.
Do we need a motion?
Do you need?
No.
We've done it.
Managers' business.
When it was in my.
Okay. So.
Yes, is it?
We've got just one thing, don't forget, we have a joint meeting here tomorrow morning at nine o'clock with the village trustees, so other than that, is there anything else?
No, I don't have anything else.
Anybody?
I have nothing else.
How many minutes?
We have minutes.
Yeah, we have the minutes to approve the minutes.
I've, I've heard that Mary has gone over these minutes with her old legal heart. And she couldn't find anything wrong with them, so I make a motion, we approve it.
All of them?
We have October sixteen. We have.
October tenth.
Don't take quite a while to read them all.
And a special meeting of the sixteenth at Vale Field.
I think October sixteen, Vale Field, and motion's been made that we approve these minutes.
Second.
Do, do you want an update on the, the October sixteen one, when you said you all talked to Gail? I talked to her today, but have you talked to her?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Well, that's not part of the minutes, so we approve that, then we can talk about.
Okay.
If we're gonna approve the minutes, we should do that first.
And then, yeah, that's a good point, Vale Field, about Gail.
So it was a motion?
We already did that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you got your minutes, approve them.
Prove the minutes.
All those.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, aye, the ayes have it, okay. Did you have something else you wanted?
On this special board meeting that was at Vale Field.
Yes.
There was a question that you'll check with Gail if the rec center wants to keep the tennis.
The rec center would like to keep the practice tennis. Because with the new materials, it will be excellent for practice lacrosse and practice soccer. So they would like to keep it.
I can't move the task. Anybody else, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
To adjourn.
Do we have?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We need to approve our.